All right, we'll say the pledge here. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here's a list from Sharon. And I assume she probably wrote some last time.
Okay. The minutes for last 15th of March, we are going to put them off until next meeting. Table land because Bruce wasn't here at that meeting, so I guess next thing is to approve
Is this pretty standard normal payment?
Yeah.
I think it's pretty close.
Pretty close.
Normally it is. I'll make a motion we approve payroll in the amount of $179,651.51.
And I'll second that. Okay, next we need to acknowledge a receipt of the payroll accounts payable in an amount
I'll make a motion we approve, or acknowledge, not approve, but acknowledge accounts payable, payable report in the amount of $188,280.44.
And I'll second that. And then we have claims to approve in the amount of $345,039.91. Let me show that compared to last time here. Okay, did you have a motion on the claims?
Yeah, we're getting ready. Just coming. Nothing that we need to be concerned about law, on claims.
On claims.
On the home?
Yep.
Yeah, the $345.
Right. And I just gave you that paper to come?
Yeah, I have, we have approved again.
That's why I was questioning. I wondered if there was anything you'd be aware of.
It says it's pretty normal, we don't have anything outstanding, anything law proofing.
All right. Make a motion we approve claims in the amount of $345,039.91.
Okay. New business.
Okay, so I have, I wanted to present to the commissioners tonight that I've met all the state deadlines. We had a deadline, a deadline March 15th for a certified report, that's having all the values and all the taxes, except the conservancies and like the guide, that that's a government to state. That deadline was met March 3rd. The abstract had to be uploaded and approved by the state, which was March, and it was approved on March 3rd. The deadline to deliver it to the county treasurer, I have to have my, all the taxes and everything calculated now to the treasurer by no later than March 31st. That deadline was met on March 16th. The treasurer does have all that report. The taxes are in the process of being printed right now as we speak. The taxes should be going out in mail on April the 12th, which the deadline for taxes to be mailed out is April the 15th from the printing company. I've already published all three of the tax rates. They have to be published three times. The first publication has been no later than April 26th. That was done March 24th. The second publication is no later than May the 3rd. That was done March 31st. And then the third publication, no later than May the 10th, and that will be published, I've got April the 5th, but it should be this Wednesday.
Good.
So I've done, all my jobs are on time. Taxes are good. Everything's going on time, like scheduled.
Okay. Core facilities, Matt, contract, is he here or is it just his contract for?
That was one that Jim presented to the council.
Okay.
Last month, in the month of March. And it's my understanding that Jim has contract and he's going to have that signed, so I assumed that with Jim being absent, we will probably push that into the next one. Because the council didn't approve, go ahead and sign it with the contract.
Okay. So we're going to take it. Jim sent us an email on that.
I was going through. I emailed as I got here and I didn't have that from him. Did you hear anything from him, Nick?
As to core facilities?
Yeah.
No.
And that's the same guy that came in last fall and talked about doing the maintenance for?
Yes.
Yeah, he's the one that, yeah, the Jim.
He did get, I mean, he did send us an email, but I think that was before meeting last month, or the 15th.
Wow, okay.
Because I can give him a thumbs up as far as I was concerned to go ahead with it. If I remember right, you might have too.
I think I said the same thing, so.
But then I don't think he was here on the 15th meeting, and I think Jim did say he would take it to the council.
And the council approved it.
Okay, so that's going to be a matter of waiting on Jim to get that. We'll just table that until he either emails you something or?
Yeah, here's what I found. It said the council approved the facility maintenance program proposed by core facilities that we approved.
Okay.
I'll let Matt stick he know so he can move forward and we can sign on the 5th, which is today. It's a three-year program that costs $12,000.
So I don't have the contract.
We don't have the contract.
And it says, let me know if you're okay with.
Which I think I sent him back.
You did, and we both did, so.
Are you aware of the contract or?
I haven't seen anything on it, no.
Well, I guess since we had already decided, and so has the council, if you come up with a contract before the next meeting, we'll let Bruce know and sign it because we've already approved it, so.
I'll see how it can help us.
Drive to Death, California, and see if Jim's got the contract. If you want a few days off.
Unpaid, no mileage either.
It'd be more than a few days. That's a long drive.
It's a long way out there.
I got to fly.
Okay, the WTHI, Steve Leatherman. What was the story on that?
He's here.
Do you hear, come on up, sit down there.
All right. Should I sit here or?
That's fine.
Right there.
Thank you. My name is Steve Leatherman. I work for WTH Technology, and we're the company that provides assistance to you with your GIS mapping. And today, I'm coming to you on a topic of data sharing. And the reason is, is we had a request from a company, renewable energy company, for county data. And the, WTH is a company, and one of the services that we provide for the county without charging anything is basically certain kinds of data sharing services. And some of those basically, as I say, do not carry a charge. So if, for example, your county has 911 services and you want to exchange data with an adjacent county, we'll help put together an agreement and, so that you can have, each county can have each other's data. So that would be an example of just something that we do if we get a request. We'll get requests from local engineering firms that are doing a contract with the county or maybe municipality in the county. And they'll say, we'd like some county data. We'll help them put together a kind of agreement, we call it a limited use agreement. It basically says that engineering firm can do that work and can get data from the county. The county is permitted to, and that data, basically can only use it for that project. So that's another example. If your school system buys some transportation software and says, we'd like to get the roads and the addresses so that we can use that in that school system software, we'll help put together an agreement to do that. This request is a little bit different. This is a company that is basically saying, we want to use the data for our own purposes. So we're not doing something for the county, or this is a case where we want to use the data for our own purposes. And with 29 other counties that we work with in Indiana, we have a procedure and a process that basically follows certain provisions that are in Indiana's open records laws. And they basically say, if you set up an ordinance and basically agree to treat everybody equal that has that kind of request, so you have the same procedure, the same charge, then you can set something up and you can actually collect some money for that service. And for the 29 other counties, and this goes back probably over 14 years when we started up the first year, we worked with some county attorneys to work on an ordinance, and we started a process of working with counties when we had this kind of request. And the paperwork that I sent you was basically the same paperwork that those 29 other counties basically have, which is a sample ordinance, an agreement that basically is between the county and WTH to handle that kind of request. And the things that we would do is, we have a data sharing application that you have a copy of. We would send that application out to that requesting party, ask them to sign it. We would take that and with a cover letter, send it to the county auditor and request that if you put on the commissioner's agenda for your review. And you have the option of approving that application or not approving that application. But if you do approve the application, then we would get a copy from the auditor, we would bill that company. Once we receive payment, then we would provide the data that they're requesting in the format that they requested. So that is essentially the procedure that we would do. The typical fee for that service has been $750, of which WTH gets two-thirds of that and the county gets a third. Bottom line, the county makes a little money on this. So it's one of those things that you're, that we're not taking money from the county, the county actually gets the money. But this, this kind of process has to be in place for you to make that charge and for you to receive some money. I will say the number of requests we get on this, it could be, you could go two years without having this kind of request.
Next day, you might have 10.
But you might have a couple that jump in. I'll tell you, but from our experience, the kind of clients that make this request, they can find the data that we're providing on your county web GIS site. So if they just want one or two parcels and they're looking for some information, they generally can find it on that website. Typically, these are companies that it is cheaper for them.
To pay the $750.
To pay the $750, get the data.
To research all that.
And have a process than it is for them to try to do it themselves. And the counties or the, or the kinds of companies that we've found that make that kind of request these days are energy companies, and we've seen a lot of renewable energy type stuff of late. A plaque book company, somebody that's wanting to do the county, you know, a plaque book. There are some national companies that collect primarily parcel data, and their clients are typically banks and property insurance companies, the kinds of companies that insure floodplain insurance and that kind of thing. They periodically want updated data for their records. All of these folks are basically using the data for their own use. They're not turning around and selling it, they're incorporating it into their, into their software for specific purposes. So it just happened, we had a request come in for Park County. Now, I will say, I called that person this morning and just to touch base with him. He had also asked for information from Putnam County, a neighboring county. And what he basically said is, I'm on a fairly short timeframe to complete the particular report he was working on. That is no pressure to you to make any decision on this kind of thing, but it might mean that he may go and do his report, it may not be the one request in the data, but I can guarantee you at some point, you will get this kind of request from somebody.
Let me back up just a minute. Make sure, I don't know if it makes any difference or not, but, do you, did you say our county, you have our county data from the standpoint, is your company working with our GIS and that kind of stuff?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure who we had.
Yes, they're all, our MVP, our tax software is also connected to that WTH GIS map. So when you go into that map, you can see all their past taxes, all their deductions, the property card. You don't even have to walk into the courthouse. If you want to see your property card, you pull it up, pictures of the house.
Well, I wasn't sure if we were one of your regular clients, that's what I was kind of getting at, but we are your, one of your regular. So these 29, is that all your clients in Indiana?
Yeah.
Or do you have more clients than that?
We have more clients.
But 29 have signed up for this agreement. So how many clients do you have roughly? Like 50?
We're in, well, we have 150 municipal clients in Indiana.
But counties?
And counties, I'd say 911 or 57 counties. We're in about 40, 42 highway departments, county highway departments, and about 30 to 35.
GIS.
Parcel type.
Okay. So most of the counties that are part of the GIS or whatever have signed this agreement to let you guys get this data to people when they request it?
Typically, the ones that sign this agreement are the counties where you were doing the parcels and our software is tied into that. So we're pretty close. I think there's maybe one or two counties that we have just picked up recently that, and I wait for a request.
Sure.
So when I get a request, then that sort of triggers my introducing this to you. I was just in Ripley County about two months ago because they had a request and worked through them. But the process is the same for all of these counties, the procedure, the pricing, it seems to have worked for 14 years. A key thing for us is you own the data. You own the data. So whether it's a free exchange, whether it's a county 911 board that's adjacent or an engineering that's asking for the data, or this kind of situation, it always goes to the commissioners for their approval.
Right.
So we do not give out any data unless we have.
Even though we signed the agreement.
You still have to.
We still have to approve the application, the specific application.
That's correct.
That they ask for in the data, so.
That's correct.
And it's no cost to us.
There's no cost to you.
Because you've already got the data.
Right.
And actually, we, as you said, we get a little bit of money of that $750 fee, so.
They have a sample application agreement in here too. This requires, since it involves money, approval by both the commissioners and the council.
Yes, I noticed that.
Because it has, even though it's a small amount, it still involves both parties.
So what do you think, Nick? Do you think you want to take some time to look it over, like before the next meeting?
Yeah, and that way Jim can look at it too, since he's not here. I don't know if he got a copy ahead of time or not, but he did.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, they may want to tender it to the council since they meet Thursday or whatever, so.
But I want to make sure all of your questions are answered and there's, I say, there's no pressure to sign it whatsoever, but this is, the opportunity arrived and so.
It may be the same guy, but I happened to get a phone call today from a renewable energy guy looking for, but he indicated this was not anything that was going to be fast. He said it's going to be something that's going to take a couple of years to kind of move forward on, but he just kind of wanted to make me aware that they were starting to survey property owners on some renewable energy possibilities here in Park County. So maybe the same company or the same gentleman.
The one thing that's nice is when all of this is in place, then everyone can handle it a little bit more straightforward because there's a procedure in place, there's a pricing in place. I can, you know, usually at that point, the auditor, whoever's getting the call, a lot of them just say, we'll call WTH and they'll bring you through the process. And then I'll basically send out that application and explain sort of what's going on.
And they fill it out and get it to us, and we either approve it or don't approve it.
Is this the same one that emailed a while back demanding information?
Yes. I have one question. So would this go from the council in April or May?
Well, I don't know. When's the council meeting next?
This Thursday.
This Thursday.
It's clearly up to you.
Yeah. I have no problem going ahead and running in front of the council.
They may want to send it back to us before they vote on it.
But at least look at it.
But at least they would have an idea of, I don't know if Mr. Leatherman can come to their meeting or not, but it's in the morning, that's the only problem. Maybe at what, 10?
At 9 o'clock this Thursday.
9 o'clock this Thursday.
Sorry, Thursday morning.
I think I can make that meeting.
Okay. I'll put you down.
It's the same.
Keep it emailed, I mean, that way I'm.
It's the same building.
You gotta come in right back here.
Sure.
I'll have to check with John first to see if I can get you on the agenda.
Okay, that's fine.
And then if I can, then we'll do it, and I'll, so I'll check with John tonight and then I'll email you tomorrow.
Either way.
To let you know.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And if that's the case, then you can get back with us. I do apologize, it's WTH and on my agenda it said WTHI.
I've said it, sorry.
Yeah, that's all right, I don't care, I just.
Do you have any other questions while I'm, while I'm here before you?
The fees on here were just the common fees that we usually used?
We set those fees back 14 years and we haven't changed them, and it seems to be the magic number. If it gets much higher, then they, then they go to other things, and if it gets too low, I don't know, but they're probably happy, but then the county's not quite as happy, There is, I put one, there's one, it says the standard fee's $750. There is a provision for providing more continuous data, and that's $1,500. The ratio is the same, it's two-thirds, one-third. We have one company that is a national energy consultant. They have a number of counties in Indiana. They wanted the person there reporting to, wanted quarterly reports, and so we have that one company on, on that $1,500. So that is even more rare than the $750s.
And I think this is the first request we've had in a couple of years, so.
I total, of those 29 counties, I get about 40 that go all the way through. So that gives you some, and that's been about standard 35.
A little over one per county then per year, so.
Yeah.
I, again, the concept, I had a hardy problem with, it's, but we'll let our attorney look it over.
Absolutely.
And the council, at least here, will, the theory behind it and why we're doing it.
I'll just wait for your email and proceed accordingly. And thank you again for letting me present to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't remember about this appointment here. For Lori Brown and Sally.
Yeah. From Katie.
Do you know anything about that, or?
Well, I mean, I don't know exactly what happened, obviously Lori affected, I assume the resignation was immediately, whatnot, Laura, as far as you know.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so she's not on the board, so we have nobody representing us right now.
Correct.
PETA Board's got three people on it, don't they, if I remember right?
It's just for the board to review.
Yeah, it's just a review for appeal, assessments and that kind of stuff, but there's three people on that PETA Board, isn't it? So right now, there's only two active members, and Katie's just recommending Josh.
I have no problem with.
She feels that Josh can do a good job on the PETA Board. I don't have any real problem with, I don't have any reason to think Josh would.
Because she just needs an approval of course, and then I can change all the commissioners appointments.
Just change the commissioner appointment, and then Josh will start taking over immediately, I guess. I don't know how often the PETA Board meets, but I don't think it's that often. Maybe more often during this time of the year because appeals are going on right now, but.
So it's not a lot at times.
But I, yeah, it's not so. So I make a motion to accept the assessor Katie Potter's recommendation to appoint Josh Sorles as the commissioner's appointment to the PETA Board. Randy just left. Justin, is Randy still? He was just like there.
Just things there, so he must wonder back. Okay, okay. I was thinking, he said that they just was working on that last.
Could be, it happens that we got two letters.
Last meeting.
Because that one, we got this earlier in the week from Chris Newman, that's what we got there.
Yes.
But then in your envelope that she gave you just a minute ago.
Oh, here?
Yep. But I feel bad, I, it's from another gentleman, and I think it's the same road they're complaining about.
I haven't seen that one, but.
But he said this is County Road 1,000 East.
I emailed you, I emailed you first when it first came through.
Right, yeah, from Chris.
I was just, he just took this last meeting, you, that's where it was worked.
This may be taken care of, both of these letters may be resolved, but I think it's the same road from what I can tell because this cleaner talks about County Road 1,000 East out towards Rocky Falls Lake, and then Chris Newman's talking about.
Yeah.
The Black Route, which includes County Road 1,000 East, Ferndale Road.
Seven.
The big Rocky Falls Bridge, so.
With this letter, this was, and then with the, you'd like to look at that?
Oh, the, yeah.
It's all, looks to me it's the same area. And that's why it was, if Randy was here, or he was here, we could just ask him. Because if he's already working on this road, I think these letters are taken care of. But he stepped away for a minute, so.
All right. Do you have any other big business? We'll just hold on to that until he gets here. here.
I do not.
Okay, how about any old business?
I do not have anything.
All right.
Do you want to wait, the employee handbook?
Randy?
We can just wait till he comes up.
We'll just wait until he does his report.
The employee handbook, do you want to wait till Jim gets back to talk about it as far as comp time and things like that?
What's that? It was the one I talked about last meeting.
Yeah, and I gave you guys a sample ordinance on it to look at. Since then, I talked to with the council, reisman Roy, and he had a suggestion to add to it. My thought process was, are we wanting any amendment to that to take effect next calendar year? Would kind of be my suggestion.
Yeah, I guess if you want to add that to it and put it off until first meeting in May, and that way we're all three here.
Okay, because it just kind of addressed use of comp time.
Yeah.
When it's appropriate, and transfers of office and things like that that weren't formally addressed before.
I'm dealing with the IRS right now. They're changing the rules on our tax returns right now. I mean, you can't change rules.
No.
It's streaming. I don't think for employees it would be necessarily fair to say, we're going to have a new comp policy in May, when they thought for the year this is, so I kind of agree with you that I think it ought to be a clean breaking point. So the first of the year would be a better time to.
Okay.
So that being said.
That being said, we got plenty of time to.
Yeah.
So we need to get, us and the council have to have our heads together. I mean, if they like something, we like something.
He's the only one from the council seeing it. With your blessing, I can pass it on to the rest of the council to review it.
And then by the time Jim gets back in May, we'll take care of it.
Okay.
I don't know that I've seen it. Maybe, did you send it to us?
I gave it to you guys at the meeting, so you might not have had a chance.
But I wasn't here the last meeting, so.
I'll email it to you.
Email it to me. Let me kind of look at what you're kind of draft proposing.
Okay.
If I have anything, I can throw that towards you.
Okay. And it's real similar to what other communities are doing. We're not recreating a wheel by any means, but.
We talked about that about a year ago where.
Yeah.
Everybody has the same basic philosophy on comp time.
Yeah.
All right, Justin, you're up.
Currently, we have 71 inmates, 59 of them are our own, so 12 DOC. Our local population about the last two months have been picking up. Went from mainly 40 to 45.
I was gonna say, I thought you were.
But now it's starting to probably be a busy summer. It's mainly drug and theft arrests. Cadillac converters are on the rise.
Yeah.
Hot item across the state, probably across the country.
What do they use that for?
They just sell them to salvage yards or.
It's something inside the Cadillac converter.
Yeah, it's like what it is now. Yeah, there's some precious.
It's precious metal.
Yeah.
Some kind of metal or something inside.
Actually, I was kind of surprised. A fellow I know had a, has an older Ford truck. He was parting out. And he had advertised it on that Facebook site to sell it. And a guy called him about buying just a Cadillac converter. And he sold it to him. The guy gave him 600 bucks for it. And he said, you got to know what you're looking for. But he told him after he bought it, he would take that to Evansville and get $1,800 out of it.
Wow.
He gave him 600 bucks cash.
Huh.
So, but he said certain ones had a lot more precious metals in them than others. So you got to be careful, I guess, which ones you buy or which ones you steal.
Which ones you steal.
Yeah, that's kind of the big thing going on. Yeah, like we're hearing, probably minimum $150 for just your probably cheapest one or whatever, so. Year-to-date collection so far from like sex offender fees, handgun permits, all that stuff, $5,558.25 handguns permits. Still, still going on the rise for us, so still, still good business. We held our seized firearms auction Saturday.
How'd it go?
Almost 40 grand. I think $39,920 is what we come up with. So we're just waiting to get the auctioneer and just see if they match what we tallied ourselves. But it's almost 40 grand, then we'll have to pay our fees. And some of them were forfeiture guns, so some of that will go like an attorney that handled the cases years ago, so. So we're hoping maybe having about 30 left over that goes into our firearms account and forfeiture account. And freed up a bunch of space in our evidence. And that was our big thing, so. That's all I have.
All in all, did you think guns went high total? Did they hire than you expected?
Well, yeah, we didn't have a dime into ours. But I mean, a lot of them may have been high at towards the end of the sale, high, you know, halfway through. You lost a lot of the crowds, so. Some of ours at the end went cheaper, I thought than what they should have. But we still, still a lot of them went for good prices or maybe a little bit higher than most. And it was a joint auctions. We were, we were second on the sale bill, so.
Yes.
We made space, so that was a big thing.
That was 30 grand you didn't have.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Well, I don't have any questions for you. That's all we've got.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
You too.
All right. Looks like Randy, you're, you're it?
How you doing, Jimmy?
We're doing pretty good.
Good.
What we was holding off on, we, there's a couple of letters here. And I couldn't remember at the last meeting, they was complaining about 1,000 East, oh, let me see, 720 there by the big Rocky Fork Bridge. Did, does my memory fail me, or did you tell me, Jim, at the last meeting, that was where he was working? He had just started that day?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought you did, but we had both these letters. I want to make sure.
Yeah, we haven't done it yet.
But you aren't working on it, but you had.
Well, I had to move them down to 1,200 East today and probably tomorrow. And then they'll come back to 1,000 at 7:00.
Okay, and I was pretty sure, that's why we wouldn't have held on this. I was pretty sure you had told me that that's where you was working. You had just started that day at the last meeting, so. And it's like all of them, there's a lot of bad ones. They'll get done.
They'll get done.
We're trying to do them as we go.
Yeah, and that's all you can do. The road going to Lena, that one's getting blacktopped, isn't it, off at 59?
Oh, 59 Cold Bluff, yeah.
Yes.
But Lena Road, Ben Zant's not this year.
Okay. I had a couple complaints on them. And then something else I was, got on my mind before going farther, on the Jefferies Ford Road. That's the blacktop that we're doing, correct?
Yes.
And then Deer Run is a sub-roads. That place right there, trying to think of, I think Roger Sylver lives there now. There's always a big hole and water runs out of the hillside.
Little house?
Yes. Are we going to make sure?
I might have ditched that.
Get that ditched? Is all the pipes under those roads in pretty decent shape, or is there even?
I think so. I haven't ran all of them yet.
Okay, before we put the money in the blacktop.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we won't be able to get to all of them. We're going to contract, but. I forget what we can, but it really looks really bad.
Yeah.
We're running out of time.
Yeah, I think we all are.
Yeah.
You go ahead. I was just curious about fixing that issue there where water's constantly coming out, keeping that road satchel.
Annual employee quarterly report. And then I have a, I have a cycle check. We didn't get the bill delayed on that or the invoice. That's why. Get it done now.
That's okay. We didn't have any others, so.
Get that. Let me see, it's a mountain. $7,989.66.
And what's this for? Is Terrope Truck Center?
Yeah, repair to a truck.
Okay.
EGR.
Okay.
EGR. I don't know what you call it.
All right, I make a motion to approve the out cycle check to Terrope Truck Center for $7,589.66.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you need this report also?
Yes, of course, I'm sure.
Got an email that our union crossing grant money should be into our account around the 417 this month. That amount is $938,990.76.
And when will our contractors start? They probably won't be until later in the summer.
It'll be sometime after April 5th or so.
I didn't know what, because it's the same company basically that does everybody, so I didn't know if maybe they would take care of Biggio County first before they came up here.
I don't know how they do it. If you took care of us, pretty close.
Did they do it pretty quick last year? Okay.
Yeah.
I guess a lot of hinge it on, just like things we talked about, you'll have to make sure you stay ahead of them. Getting what needs done beforehand.
And we do have Adams Road closed out here, moved north on the 36. Bridge inspection, knocked that little bridge down to 12 ton. There's a lot of semis goes up.
Up to Byron?
Yeah, Byron City. Now even Hudson's use it. They cross the slack, you know, but for milk. And then there's some others that delivers up there too. We got it pretty well knocked out today. Hopefully bar will send the pipe. I'd say if only it's closed for two weeks, just hopefully it's done this way.
So when you get that done, then the weight limit will go up?
Yeah, it won't be a weight limit on it.
Oh, because it's.
We'll put the pipe in if it's 20 feet.
So those semis can go back on that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we don't have faith in inspection.
Yep.
Yeah. We started patching last week. We patched all week. And back to patching again today. I had to patch all this week. We get one application. Call him in tomorrow and do an interview. We get about five or six more of them.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
Did, did one of the patcher trucks get hit?
Yeah, they're on Bridge Road.
I thought it did.
Yeah.
Do much damage to it?
No, it didn't hurt it at all.
Oh, it didn't?
No, it, it had pretty bad pickup, forward pickup. Didn't look through, but had a big scratch on the side. She just ran into it. She was awful upset about it, because I didn't like it. Had the lights on the truck.
Yeah, I seen it behind her that Sunday.
They even cut the tree at the head of it.
Yeah, that's scary, somebody don't get hit.
Yeah, as long as, yeah, you gotta watch out for employees. Hopefully, they stay safe.
Yeah, a lot of them don't take attention at all. That's all I have. Do you guys have anything else, Lori?
I think I've already discussed pretty much everything I had. Most Bruce has something.
That is just these letters, but I wasn't here at the last meeting, so. But it looks like it's taken care of. And actually, one of these letters is from a client of mine, so when I see her, I'll just let her know that we're working on. I mean, it may take them a while. They can't expect it to be done immediately, but I'll just let her know that.
Like you say, hopefully Wes and they get back to 1,000. And they, they on 720 it, but he'd be the next one they want. And we'll go down 900 South, Ben Zant. No. Now that corner knocked out then.
Yeah, well, like I said, this time of the year, you could throw a dart at the board and go anywhere, and there's work to be done. I mean.
Been called and complained to because I started on the wrong end of the road.
Yeah.
County Road.
Yeah, I mean, what's the difference?
Depends on what color it is.
Well, it does, yeah. But I mean, from the standpoint of repairing the road.
It depends on what the color.
You gotta, you gotta put something in all the holes anyway. So whether you start on the east end, west end, north end, south end.
Repaved B W Road from Savannah South to Jackson Bridge.
You start on the wrong end.
Whatever year it was. No, the lady called me and said, I heard you're going to pave this road. I said, yeah, we're going to pave this soon. I don't want it paved. I said, lady, you shocked me. That's the first call I ever had for, didn't want it paved. She said, well, you're going to speed everybody up. I said, yeah, I can do that.
Yeah.
Well, can you put speed bumps there?
I might put speed bumps out where I live.
Thank you, Randy.
Thanks, Randy. Keep up the good work. Keep the guys' heads up. I know it's hard right now because everybody wants their roads fixed.
We have to do it.
It just takes time, so. They'll get to it.
Other comments?
I think I motion with you.
I'll second that.